Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for August 2, 2011. And will I cook? Please call the roll.
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here. Well, this morning, we have for our moment of inspiration Abby Sunderland, sailor and adventurer. Abby's been around the water and on boats since she was six months old. Since becoming a teenager, she has had her sights set on making history as the youngest person, male or female, to circumnavigate the world. She was inspired by Brother Zach's 2009 trip sailing around the world, in which at seventeen years old, he became the youngest person to solo circumnavigate the world. She then decided to undertake a similar adventure at sixteen years old. January 2010, she embarked on her voyage from Marina Del Rey, California, on Wild Eyes, an open forty racing sailboat, and chronicled her trip through her blog. However, on June 10, Wild Eyes was rolled 360 degrees by a massive wave—I heard it was a rogue wave—completely disabling her sailboat and ending her trip. Since then, she has been working to tell her story in a book called Unsinkable: A Young Woman's Courageous Battle on the High Seas, and through a documentary. And Ms. Sunderland, please come up to the microphone. Thank you for being here this morning. I look forward to hearing from you.
Hey, good morning. So much for having me here this morning. Well, when I was thirteen years old, I had a dream, and it was a little bit crazy. I wanted to sail around the world. I wanted to be the youngest person to ever do it. Of course, at thirteen, I wasn't quite ready, and neither were my parents quite ready for it all. So three years later, I finally had a boat, a sponsor. My parents were willing to let me do this, and I was headed out to live a dream—a dream that the whole entire world pretty much deemed impossible. I was headed out to do this thing I dreamed of for so long, and I was finally getting a chance, and not many people do. Ten days into the trip, people all around the world had said, "She won't make it a week out. She won't make it ten days out. She's a little girl. There's no way she can do it. She's got this huge boat." And ten days out, I was already having trouble. In fact, I was gonna have to stop. I was gonna have to pull into Cabo San Lucas. It hit hard, you know, the realization that I was already gonna have to stop this trip. So I pulled into Cabo, got things fixed, but I was headed out again. I wasn't gonna let anything stop me at this point. I was headed down to Cape Horn. Cape Horn, the Mount Everest of sailing. People said, "If she can make it a couple weeks out, she can make it to the Pacific, she'll get stopped at Cape Horn. She won't make it around there." I was down towards Cape Horn, and again, I started having trouble, equipment trouble, and it was looking like I might not be able to do it. The thing about sailing is you have an idea of your limits, and a lot of times, you get pushed to those limits. And then there's times when you get pushed past them. And that was one of those times, rewiring two autopilot systems in the bilge of a boat all night long, when you're exhausted and so tired, you can't even understand the people on the phone anymore. It was a tough night, but I made it around Cape Horn eventually, and I was on the Atlantic Ocean. At this point, I was feeling pretty good about myself. I mean, I'd just gotten around Cape Horn, this thing that not many people sail around, hardly anyone does it alone, and no sixteen-year-old had ever done it, and I had. I felt like I was finally starting to prove some of those critics wrong, you know? I was finally starting to prove myself to them and to myself, really. I was on to the Atlantic Ocean, got through there with not a whole lot happening, other than a few albatross flying into wind generators, flying fish and squid landing all over my boat, and catching a seagull on accident. Stopped fishing after that, had really bad fishing luck. But, you know, things were going well through there, and then I was about two weeks away from Cape Town, South Africa, and things started looking down again. It was looking like I might have to stop, in fact. And after a little while, we realized that stopping was really the only responsible thing I could do. I had too many equipment problems, and if I headed out into a whole new ocean, the Indian Ocean, things could get a whole lot worse. I'd be too far away from land to pull in if I needed to. And so I was headed towards Cape Town. I had a good week where I knew I was headed there, and it was one of the hardest things ever, you know, knowing that you're headed towards land. I planned this trip to be nonstop. I'd planned to sail around the world six months straight without ever stopping, and here I was, I was stopping. It was taking away the nonstop part of my record. I'd gotten so wrapped up in chasing a record, because all the people in the world were— I was letting them influence me too much. And here I was, all of a sudden, the record wasn't gonna be there anymore. But that wasn't gonna stop me. I was gonna keep going. I knew I was gonna keep going. There's no way you can give up when you get a chance like this, a once-in-a-lifetime chance. And so I pulled into Cape Town, and I realized how hard it is to walk after spending three months at sea, and how hard it is to talk after spending three months without talking a whole lot. In fact, it's really hard. I had friends who had to hang onto my shoulders when I walked around, because I'd occasionally slip or trip, and I was tripping upstairs and downstairs, and it was really funny, actually. But two weeks at Cape Town, I could walk in a straight line, I could carry on a full conversation that not only I could understand, but so could everyone else, and it was time to head out again. And that was one of the hardest things I'd ever done, you know? I'd always been a shy girl, always quiet. I was never anything special, just a normal sixteen-year-old girl. I'd never really been a people person, until spending three months without them. Then, all of a sudden, I couldn't get enough of people, and after two weeks, I was having to leave them again. And I knew just that much better what I was getting myself into when I headed out back onto the ocean. I was gonna spend three more months without talking to people, without walking on dry land, and I knew it was really hard. And I knew I was gonna run into bigger problems, and I was gonna have to push myself again, maybe even further. But leaving Cape Town, I had no idea what was waiting for me just two weeks out. I had no idea quite how far I'd have to push myself when I left Cape Town. And a week out, week and a half out, I started having a hard time, getting hit by storm after storm. And when you're down south, these storms roll through hard and fast, and it was taking a toll on the boat. A storm would hit during the day, and I'd have to just hang on, and then at night, I'd have to stay up all night, just pulling the boat back together, trying to fix things, trying to get it in order for the next day, because there was another storm coming. And so about five days, like this, and then the sixth day, I got hit by the worst storm I'd ever seen. There were thirty-foot waves and sixty-knot winds, so I mean, a thirty-foot wave, that's like the size of a three-story building, and sixty knots of wind, that's like sticking your head out of the car window on the freeway. And it was pretty fun. I mean, my boat's designed like a surfboard, so you get in these big rollers, and it surfs, and it's addicted to surfing. And it's designed for that type of weather, so it was handling it well. Now, later on in the day, things started to calm down. I'd had a rough day. My boat was knocked down four times. I had sails that were shredded, my radar got torn off the mast, my engine got soaked. There was a lot of work that needed to be done, and so I was getting down below, starting to get working on everything. And all of a sudden, you know, I started—all of a sudden, didn't hear anything, see anything coming, the pole boats just picked up and thrown. And I went flying across the cabin, and I started thinking, "All right, it's a knockdown. I'm getting knocked down again." I'd been knocked down four times during the day. One more, no big deal, the boat's gonna pop up. But the boat didn't pop up. I went flying across the cabin and hit my head, and everything went black. And I woke up on the roof of my boat with water pouring in. I don't know where it was coming from. It was pitch black. Things were falling around everywhere, and the boat was in the process of rolling back over. And it rolled back over. I'd just been hit by a rogue wave. Now, nobody's exactly sure what causes them, sometimes it's two big waves that come together. So that is just one wave that's had a long time to work its way up, but the wave that hit me was anywhere from sixty to 100 feet. And when you get hit by a sixty to 100-foot wave, bad things happen, and especially when you're in the exact middle of the Indian Ocean, 2,000 miles from South Africa, 2,000 miles from Australia, the two places with major search and rescue stations. So needless to say, I was in one of those spots where sailors look on a map before they leave and go, "Right there, everything's gotta go right. Nothing can go wrong there." That's where it'd all gone wrong. And so I went outside, got outside, checked out what was going on there. My mask was gone. My boom was snapped in half. My tiller was snapped. My engine was soaked. The boat was a disaster. Looked like it had just been rolled. I mean, that's what happens when you tip a boat upside down, it just turns into a mess. And I was in a bad spot, and I jumped back down below. I had a satellite phone. I could talk to my parents. I could call somebody. I could let them know what had happened. I wasn't gonna have to start a search and rescue mission. I got downstairs. I found my phone. It was under a foot and a half of water in my bilge. Phone was ruined. I wasn't gonna be able to call home. And I started thinking, "All right, what do I do now? I'm stranded in the middle of nowhere." And the next thing you do is you set off your e-purp. I didn't want to have to do that. I pulled my e-purp off the wall, sat down with it. I was holding it there, and there's a warning sticker on the back. It says, "Not set off unless you're in a real emergency." And so I started to think to myself, "You know what? I'm not exactly dead yet. I mean, things could be worse. This could—I mean, I'm fine. The boat's floating. Maybe I'll drift to land in a few days. Do I really need to set this off?" And eventually, common sense went out, and I pushed the button. And, you know, pushing the button, it doesn't seem like a big deal. I mean, yeah, I needed to be rescued. I was in a bad place. But at the same time, pushing that button, it was ending my trip, my entire dream. It was ending so much more than that. It was ending the dream and the trip of so many other people, all the people who had followed me, all the people who had worked so hard to pull it off and to help me along on this. And there I was, I was ending it out there, just a matter of days. The entire, you know, years and years of preparation was just gone. And so I spent 24 hours in the boat, crawled up in the front compartment, the last dry place on the boat, and the next morning, a plane flew over. I was amazed to see that out there. They were most definitely looking for me. I mean, I was a little bit shocked at first, I was thinking, "Maybe sightseeing passengers or something," but no, they were looking for me. And so they flew over. I told them that my boat was okay and that I was okay. They said, "Hang on, a rescue ship's coming in 24 hours." Well, 24 hours later, I turned my radio back on, waiting for a call from the ship, but the call didn't come. And it was a few hours later, two, three, four, about five hours later, I started thinking, "All right, maybe nobody's coming. Stuff happens on the ocean, maybe they ran into trouble." And so I started thinking, "What do I need to do to make this boat, get this boat in shape that I can last out here as long as I need to?" So I started, you know, I needed to get the engine working, the heater working, and my water maker needed to get fixed. I needed to do a bunch of stuff to get this boat in more livable order. And so I got to work on that, and wasn't anything else to do at that point. And so I was down below, and I looked outside, and all of a sudden, I see this giant ship filling up my window. I jumped outside, and there was this massive 150-foot fishing ship, literally two feet away from my boat. They got so close, I was beginning to freak out, thinking they were gonna scratch the paint. But I decided not to worry about the paint and just be happy that somebody had come to pick me up. And so, you know, it took a while. They lowered the dinghy into the water. I got over to their ship, thinking, "How am I gonna go from this tiny little dinghy way down here to this giant ship way up there?" And there's this little rope ladder along the side of the boat, little pegs, you know, wooden pegs that are missing, and they're all slimy and green, and, you know, that's how I was gonna get up there. And so it wasn't looking too good, but the captain, he came over and tied a bunch of lines around me. They weren't gonna lose me again. Tied a bunch of lines around me, and right as I was about to hop on the front of the boat and jump onto the ladder, this big swell lifted the dinghy up, and the big boat was on the other side, so we came right about level, and all the guys on the boat just picked me up and put me on board. And so there I was. My trip had been ended, you know, so much work, so much effort, and it seemed like there should have been, you know, I should have done something else. Something should have happened, you know? "Why? Why?" I kept asking, "Why did all this happen? There's no good reason for it." And, yeah, I kept on thinking back to, you know, "All things work together for the good of those who love the Lord." You know, I'd always been a Christian. For those who work for God, you know, things are supposed to work for the good. But I wasn't seeing any good at all on this. In fact, I was seeing a lot of bad stuff. I was seeing media just tearing apart my family and me, and I was seeing just terrible things happening everywhere because of what had happened. I lost my dream, you know? Not the type of dream I was gonna get another shot at. My one shot, and it was gone. And it was tough for a while. I started to think, "You know, stuff like that, that's—there's nothing good that's gonna come out of this." Until I was back for maybe a month or two, and I started going around and talking, and, you know, I went to a couple of schools and stuff, thinking, "How am I going to inspire kids? Here I have. I've gone out, I've chased a dream. How can I tell kids to chase a dream when they see that my dream's been completely wrecked?" But then it started to click, you know? Maybe I'm not supposed to tell people to chase their dreams, or, you know, maybe I am supposed to do that, but maybe I'm supposed to tell them more than chase your dream. Maybe I'm supposed to tell them that hard stuff happens, you know? Everybody gets hit by their own rogue wave, and it's what you do with it that matters. And when those hard times, you keep pressing on, do you reach higher, you know? When you have a goal that's impossible, you know, when you have something that's way too high, you just have to climb higher. You have to reach harder. And I started realizing that there's a whole lot more that I've got out of this trip because of the way it ended. And because of how it ended, there's a whole lot more that a lot of people can get out of it. And so it turned into something so much bigger than it ever would have been, had everything gone according to plan, like they do so often. You know, everybody's got their story of everything working out perfectly, but what happens when it all falls apart? And what happens when it all falls apart is you realize just how you can take something that looks like a disaster, and you realize how you can turn it into something great, and you realize that you can never give up, and that you have to always keep working hard. And that's the story of me and my boat. So thanks so much for having me out here today.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for coming, and it is quite inspiring, and your courage in doing this trip, and then being able to find that it really led you to a very good place to be able to help others today. So thank you very much for your inspiration.
Yeah, thank you.
And with that, then, Supervisor Foy.
You know, you are very inspiring, and the courage to go and do something and to take a dream and go do it, you know? It's not only that maybe I didn't complete what I wanted to do, but to inspire yourself and inspire others is to go try. I think I'd rather have a life of things I tried than not trying at all. So congratulations on doing it. It was great. Thanks so much.
Mr. Powers?
I was just gonna let you know, you've certainly inspired us up here this morning, but there's also lots and lots of people watching this streaming online, so you're getting to a lot of people.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you, too, for—16-year-old, you're very, very, very brave, you know, to be out there sailing around the world in that little tiny boat and with the three-story foot-high waves. It's as scary as anything, but I want to commend you for your bravery and also for your sharing. Thank you so much.
I just sort of meant, you've become a very effective speaker, and that is one of those sort of unintended things that you probably weren't thinking about when you were watching—
Terrified of public speaking. My biggest fear.
And so now, so look at all of the growth, and so to the extent that you can inspire other young people, and your speaking ability is now gonna help you do that. So I sure hope you pass this on to lots of other young people in Ventura County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sunderland, and I know for sure we're gonna be hearing more about you. Good luck in your future adventures. All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And Supervisor Bennett, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Every word, ready, begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, and our next item on the agenda, then, is going to the minutes of our meeting of July 19.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we continue the minutes till Roberto Haddad, August 9.
Okay. We have a motion to continue. And a second from Supervisor Bennett, if we could all please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Still so inspired.
And then our next item on the agenda is agenda review, and I'll put it over to Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Just two minor corrections this morning. Consent agenda, item 17, the agenda header should read Public Works Agency Watershed Protection District, and regular agenda, item 32, has been requested to be continued to August 9.
What was that? Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
And then, does the board have any requests to also make any changes to the agenda? Okay. Then at this time, can we have a motion to approve the agenda as revised? We have a motion from Supervisor Foy, and a second from Supervisor Zaragoza, if we could all please vote. Great, that passes unanimously, and we'll go on to item seven, which is our consent agenda items. These are items 10 through 20. We have a motion from Supervisor Foy, a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. And again, if we could all please vote, we're on a roll. We can go right to our public comments. Do we have any public comments today? Does not look that way. And then we'll go to board comments and start with Supervisor Foy.
Thank you very much. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and that is my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Help us out here, Supervisor Long.
Yes, good morning. All right, I'm gonna start out with a couple things. First, a sales pitch. I'm in walking again this year for the Making Strides, and it's Saturday, August 13, and I'm on a team called the Pinkets and the Striders, and here's your little brochure on it. If you'd like to support me, I'd like your support. It benefits, of course, making more birthdays for American Cancer Society. It's at the Harbor Cove Beach. It's a 5K walk, and it's great fun, and please support and join the team if you wish. You can go online and join us. And another one related to the American Cancer Society, they are busy. They're busy doing good things, and that is the—this Sunday, August 8, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., at the Mullen Auto Museum in Oxnard, is the Bugatti Geyser Ball for the American Cancer Society. And if you haven't had a chance to go to this museum, the Bugatti, of course, is a world-known automobile that's worth millions of dollars, and they have—this entire museum is full of automobiles, collector's items, and it's just a beautiful venue. This is just an early afternoon, 3:00 to 8:00 event, and it also benefits the American Cancer Society. So if you're interested in that, I can point you in the right direction. And—did I mention that?
Oh, yes. Are you into it?
No, yeah, I am. After the fairgrounds—well, after the fairgrounds. Well, the fair kicks off Wednesday.
Yeah, August 2.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. But on Saturday, August 6, is the Fair Parade, and following that, if you get a chance, there's the—celebrating the grand opening of our new community cat room, Miller's Kitty Cottage, at our own Ventura County Animal Services out at the animal shelter out on our airport property. And it starts at 11:00, and it should be great fun to see the final results of that cat cottage, the kitty cottage, and I plan to go. And I don't pet cats, because I'm allergic to them, but I love looking at them and hearing their meows. I have a list to adjourn in memory of here, two folks from the Cameroe community. And just a congratulatory and appreciation and a thank you to Claire Hope and the volunteer group, which is hundreds of volunteers. Claire is the founder and chairperson for the Ventura County Stand Down, and the 19th Annual Stand Down took place this last week, and I'm sure you all read about it in the paper. I attended the kickoff for it. Next year is gonna be the 20th, so it really will be a big event, and I've committed to her to help with it. I just bring it up because, one, it's always very successful. They do a tremendous hand up to help veterans who are homeless, and helping them to identify what services they qualify for, what their needs may be, giving them one-day respite, two-day respites, and it's been just an amazing volunteer-driven program. Vietnam vets started it years ago across the nation. There are over 200 in the United States now, and at the event, the kickoff, there were representatives from almost every community in the county, from Ojai, from Oxnard, from Thousand Oaks, from the VFWs, the IBEW. IBEW has been doing the electrical, donating the electrical for Stand Down for the entire 19 years, just donating their time and energy. Patagonia blankets every year. Pleasant Valley Lions Club provides lunch. The Ventura Elks Lodge in Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, and Simi Valley, they all contribute different things to it—flags, food, clothes, shoes. It's just an amazing event, and next year, I would invite all of us to participate and support Claire Hope and her tremendous work she does, again, with this and celebrating and appreciating our veterans, and our veterans who are probably at the lowest point in their life when they're homeless, so it's a good event. And that wraps up my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Madam Chair, I'd like to adjourn in memory of those folks on this list, and also on Wednesday, I had the opportunity to attend the welcoming committee ceremonies for the Oxnard Sister City at Plaza Park. This is a sister city celebration, or interaction's been going on between the city of Ocklatan and Oxnard for about 47 years, and during that time, they share business and cultural traditions, and how to better their governmental ideas and so forth, and also the other things that they work with is public safety, and they've—the city of Oxnard has shared some of the old fire trucks with Ocklatan, and now it's gone to the point that they have better fire trucks than we do, because of the work that we've helped them with. So that was a great event. And also, I had the opportunity to take my grandkids and my daughter back to the airport, Burbank, after being here a couple of weeks, well, more than a couple of weeks. We left Oxnard, and it was 64 degrees, and it was 100 degrees in Burbank, and they're flying into Fort Worth, Dallas-Fort Worth, and they've had over 100-plus degree temperatures for the last 20-plus days. So they called up and said, "Well, we're here. We missed Oxnard in the 64-degree temperatures." So anyway, they went back home, so we're gonna miss them. That's all.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and the one thing I wanted to emphasize—the two things on my list are ones that Supervisor Long's already covered, so I appreciate your coverage and support of those, and that was to talk about the Stand Down and the efforts by Claire Hope and moving that forward. I'm glad to hear that you're gonna be involved next year. That's great. Good for you, and that is a remarkable thing here in the city of Ventura that has become a great tradition and a real help when a veteran gets themselves in that spot. And the other thing I was gonna mention is the Animal Services Department's grand opening of the Kitty Cottage. And the final thing is, I'd like to thank Supervisor Long for regularly working with the Making Strides and the breast cancer effort and stuff.
For your support.
You'll get it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I conclude—oh, I'll go with mine first and then conclude our board comment, and that is—well, first of all, we all know that today is National Ice Cream Sandwich Day, so I'm just reminding you just in case you forgot. And also, this day in history, 1776, members of Congress affixed their signatures to an enlarged copy of the Declaration of Independence, and also in 1909, the first Lincoln penny was issued. As far as events, I also—my office actually moved physically this last week, thanks to the help of GSA, great service always, and IT, and we're happy to be live and online and almost phones working, and we're just delighted to be there. But on the day that we moved in, we had our first letter, and it was the invitation to the Kitty Cottage grand opening. Ms. Miller is a resident of Thousand Oaks who really wanted to do something to remember her daughter, and so we're all looking forward to attending, and I hope you'll all be there, petting cats or not petting cats. Also, last week, I was able to attend the last big public event called Open Borders, and that's the old Borders bookstore in Thousand Oaks, which the county purchased from Larry Janz and is making into a health clinic. Had about a month or two of emptiness, and being a vacant building, and the county allowed Mr. Janz to use that and open it up to some really good art, both sculptures, Antle Adam prints and other kinds of art there, as well as musical performances from some old rock bands to some eclectic music. And really brought in some life to Thousand Oaks that we all needed, I think.
Jefferson Airship.
Jefferson Airship, and I heard it sounded just like the real thing. They rocked. All right. It's good the youth can find out about what us old timers.
Real music is loud.
No, it's good music. All right. With that, then I'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is our regular agenda items. And item thirty, and it's our CEO's office regarding the adoption of some classifications and salary ranges.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. You have before you classifications in the healthcare agency and the modification of a classification for an exempt position that already exists in the CEO's office. In the case of those in the healthcare agency, it is in the behavioral health area. This is a creation of classifications as a result of a request by behavioral health and negotiations with the SEIU. This establishes positions in the crisis team unit that are entitled to be paid at the same rate as the regular behavioral health professionals who are not on the crisis team. It also entitles them, based on their hours, to be paid overtime. As you might imagine, a crisis team is subject to a fair amount of call-out and extended periods. We would be in a position otherwise that it would be a career-difficult choice for someone to decide to leave regular behavioral health and go to the crisis team when they're no longer entitled overtime and yet subject to even more of the same call-out. So this was an appropriate discussion with the SEIU and behavioral health. It also provided for an agreement for us to create per diem classifications of the same type that can be used for fill-in. Because you never staff enough to cover all of the potentialities, but you should have the ability to bring in per diems to fill for those positions as necessary. The other is a modification in the position of the executive assistant in the CEO's office that takes that position from non-exempt to, from exempt to non-exempt. That would indicate that individuals in that position, just as the seventeen other executive secretaries, are entitled during those long hours to be paid overtime rather than granted administrative leave. So they would be paid for hours worked. And that's the last change that we made, and that would be, now there would be eighteen of the executive assistants out of twenty-seven who are in that category.
Thank you. That brings the mall in then, right? Good.
We're working on it.
Are there any questions or a motion?
No, I think that's good. I think, bring that in there. Good, thank you, John. It's good to see you again. Haven't seen you here for a while.
They keep me locked up. By the way, I would like to thank Melanie Roy and the SEIU for sitting down and working that issue out on the crisis team. Nothing got delayed, no services got disrupted, but everybody sat down and talked their way through it. And we're fortunate that they've got that kind of relationship.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Foy, a second from Supervisor Long. If we could all please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicole. Good to see you again. Our next item is item thirty-one, and this is regarding a different kind of surcharge fee at the Simi Valley landfill.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Patty Pacala with the Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. This item, as you said Supervisor Parks, is for an annual adjustment to the county surcharge fee at the Simi Valley landfill for calendar year 2012. Back in 2002, your board approved a methodology of how to adjust these county surcharge fee on an annual basis. The methodology includes preparation of what we call a market rate area study, MARS, for twenty-nine landfills stretching from San Diego to Paso Robles along the coastline and Coalinga to the north. And our staff within IWMD prepared 2011 MARS report. Based on this MARS report, we are recommending increasing the county surcharge fee by three-point-one-four percent from the current $2.55 cents per ton to $2.63 cents per ton. And if, this fee will be applicable to both in-county and out-of-county material that's brought to the Simi Valley landfill. We are estimating that it will generate approximately $2.6 million for calendar year 2012. Our staff within IWMD will verify, collect, and deposit these funds into the general purpose revenues. That concludes my verbal presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
I've got a quick question, real quick.
Supervisor Foy?
This fee, though, is not based on any additional expense we have. It's just based on your survey, right?
It's based on the methodology approved by your board, which is tied to what we call a mean market rate of all the twenty-nine landfills.
Right. And is, everybody else went up, or last time that we had this fee, it wasn't as high as, I mean, let's say if we did this and you increased this, if you redid this thing again three, four, five, six months from now, would our fees still go up? I mean, are we just taking some medium average? Is that what it is?
Yes, it's a median, a medium of all the twenty-nine landfills.
Right.
In Southern California and, as I said, Paso Robles, all the way to Paso Robles and Coalinga.
Is that how the rest of these landfills charge their rates too? Or is that, they all have some different method?
Well, each landfill may have a different methodology. But for this particular landfill, which happens to be a private landfill, and this was the methodology approved by your board and accepted by the landfill owner.
So the $2.6 million, how much of that is, how much more is coming in over last year?
It's, we are estimating $60,000.
Sixty thousand more? Okay. And this just comes from the residents, whoever, people who bring whatever to the landfill? If it's a waste hauler, or if I bring my pickup truck, or whatever, per ton?
Well, this would establish what we call a maximum gate rate at the Simi Valley landfill. And once a maximum gate rate is established, then Simi Valley landfill will provide an annual report. As part of the report, they would identify the different rates that will be charged. And so the people, if you are going to the gate, for example, you'll be paying the maximum gate rate that's established for a given year. For others, like cities, they may have a different rate negotiated by waste management. It will eventually have impact on the solid waste rates for cities and county areas who take the solid waste to Simi Valley landfill.
Right, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. We have a motion from Supervisor Bennett, second from Supervisor Zaragoza. I've known about five years ago, I believe, the board actually approved using some of this for our county parks. And while we are not doing that anymore, the new surcharge that we're looking for out of county trash, we'll be able to make that happen too. If we could all please vote. Passes on a four-one with Supervisor Foy dissenting. And that, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacala. Concludes our regular agenda item. Can we have a motion for our correspondence agenda? Motion by Supervisor Foy, second by Supervisor Bennett. And we have an opportunity to vote yet again. And at this point, we will go into closed session, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And I don't, you don't anticipate an announcement, so none of us will. And then we'll be back here then for our time certens. Our first one is at 10:00 A.M. Thank you. I don't want to hit the gavel. I might make babies cry or something. Hi, good morning, everybody. We're back from our closed session on our August second, 2011 Board of Supervisors meeting. And our 10:00 A.M. time certain is proclaiming Rural Breastfeeding Week. And hooray for that. Having been a breastfeeding mother for at least four kids and being able to enjoy the benefits of prolactin and actually a little bit of birth control and health, and I am very happy for all of you and most particularly for your children who are benefiting and probably will receive those benefits throughout their lives as a result of the good nutrition they're getting early on. Go ahead and read this resolution and then come down there and present it. So the resolution is, I guess I'm giving it to Dr. Ochard, so I'll come down there and also Patty Zoll. It says, "Whereas the people of Ventura County are deserving of good health, and whereas all available knowledge indicates that human milk optimally enhances the growth, development, and well-being of the infant by providing the best possible nutrition, protection against infection and allergies, and the promotion of maternal and infant bonding. And whereas breastfeeding promotes healthier mothers and benefits society through lower healthcare costs for infants, a healthier workforce, stronger family bonds, and less waste. And whereas breastfeeding is economical and environmentally friendly, providing its benefits at little or no cost. And whereas breastfeeding is recognized by major medical organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Academy of Family Physicians, the American Dietetic Association, the National Association of WIC Directors, UNICEF, and WHO, as the preferred method of infant feeding and support breastfeeding throughout the early years of life. And whereas the Breastfeeding Coalition of Ventura County, who we have before us today, exists to support breastfeeding as the cultural norm for all babies and to promote maternal and child health through breastfeeding education, support, and outreach in Ventura County, and also a great support group for mothers. And whereas the Breastfeeding Coalition of Ventura County and La Leche League celebrates Rural Breastfeeding Week, August first through seventh, 2011, which is proclaimed by the World Alliance for Breastfeeding Action along with the World Health Organization and UNICEF. And whereas the families of Ventura County need reliable sources of information to make an informed choice about the care and feeding of their infants, and it also helps keep them quiet. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim August first through seventh, 2011, as Rural Breastfeeding Week. It's the only way I could talk on the phone. And with special emphasis on breastfeeding promotion urges all citizens to seek reliable nutrition information and to support breastfeeding as a high priority for healthier babies in Ventura County." So I'll come down there and present this. I also know one of my staff is here on her day off to support you all, so with her little thirteen-month-old. Might mention also that our county does have a lactation room if anyone needs it up on the fourth floor. And I'll present this to you. If you have anything you'd like to say, and then we can also take a photo. Right on up.
Well, I've got stuff to talk about with the awards, but we can do that in a second.
So you will accept this? And then our next item too, we have another item related to this.
Well, thank you very much. On behalf of the Breastfeeding Coalition of Ventura County, we're always honored that you give us time here during your meeting, and we're so excited to share this with all of the residents of Ventura County. Thank you.
You're most welcome. Congratulations. Wonderful, thank you. And then why don't I turn it over to you? I know you have some certificates and...
Yes. Good morning. My name is Patty Zoll, and I'm the co-chair with the Breastfeeding Coalition, co-chair for the awards. Dr. Patty Ochard is our chair for this year and has been doing a fabulous job. As Supervisor Parks talked about what the goals and objectives are of the Breastfeeding Coalition, I don't need to go back over that, but I do have to say that I'm only one little spoke in this wonderful wheel of women that make this group happen. We all put in time, extra time on weekends and doing functions and doing outreach and coming up with fabulous ideas. And apparently, our coalition in this county has been getting some recognition from the state Breastfeeding Coalition. So they've been coming to us to borrow some of our forms and ideas, and so we feel pretty proud about that because we're very much a grassroots effort. So again, we appreciate the time that you give us in front of you each year. And we feel it's so important to acknowledge employers and key people that have a role in supporting and advocating for breastfeeding. So we have our annual Breastfeeding Friendly Award. And this award program has been going strong for probably close to six years. We've got four categories of awards that we're presenting today. So if I could just say a little bit about each award winner and call them up to get their certificate and their plaque. We have the large business category. And the winner this year of the large business category was Amgen in Thousand Oaks. Caitlin Maloney is the employee that nominated Amgen, that Amgen is her employer. And part of the information that Caitlin provided to us about Amgen is that they provide several private lactation rooms with refrigerators and padded rocking chairs for onsite employees. Amgen is noted for implementing a work-from-home program that allows Caitlin to breastfeed on demand at home. And actually, her quote is, "My manager has been very supportive of my flexible work situation, which allows me to continue providing my daughter with the best possible start to life. As a result, I feel more loyalty to Amgen than ever and will work very hard to maintain a lifelong career with them." And so Caitlin's actually going to accept the award for Amgen today. She's gonna come up with her beautiful baby. I don't know if you can hold both. For our small business category, the winner this year is the Sierra Vista Family Medical Clinic in Simi Valley. The employee that nominated her employer is Charlena Pena. And accepting the award is Karina Barahas. Okay. So come on up. A little bit of information, Sierra Vista Family Medical Clinic is very pro-breastfeeding. The physicians support the breastfeeding efforts not only of their patients, but also of the staff at the clinic. And Charlena's quote is, "I breastfed for almost three years in a row. I'm expecting baby number three and look forward to breastfeeding and returning to work with all the support we get. We currently have four moms pumping and sharing advice and support to one another. I love it. I plan to return after maternity leave and create a mommy club support group for breastfeeding." That's awesome place to work. For our nonprofit category, the winner this year is Oxnard College. The employee that nominated Oxnard College is Della Nulo. And accepting the award today is Vice President, Dr. Erica Endrungenis. I did it wrong. Okay. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. So Della was granted additional leave time in order to continue breastfeeding her daughter. Expressing breast milk for Della is a slower-than-usual process, so the only way she could continue nursing her daughter past five months was... nursing her daughter past five months was to take an extended leave, and the college granted her that leave. Her quote is, "If I had to return to work at six months, my daughter would no longer be getting the wonderful nutrition she only gets currently through breast milk. This was an amazing opportunity, and not many employers would do this for an employee. They allowed me the extra time for my daughter. It has changed my life. I will forever be grateful." So, congratulations. Okay, and our last award winner is in the category of physician. And a few years ago, we added this category because we felt that it was so important that physicians would be supportive and encouraging for moms to breastfeed exclusively. The winner this year in the physician category is our very own Dr. Patty Ochard. Dr. Patty's patient, Karina Martinez, nominated her for this award. And Karina began seeing Dr. Patty when breastfeeding problems occurred. Dr. Patty supported Karina, taught her skills so she could continue to breastfeed exclusively, even when her son was diagnosed with a food allergy that no elimination diet cured. Karina's quote is, "The biggest support was her advice and all the answers I received to my weekly questions. I felt like we were a team. Dr. Patty looked up many of my specific questions and called me back with answers immediately. My son is now nine months old, and thanks to Dr. Patty breastfeeding has been successful."
Okay. Do you dare try to put all the babies and moms together in one photo?
It could be fun.
You all like to try to get in one photo. There's a lot of us.
You just have them in arms and come on down?
You want to bring your babies in?
All right. Let's go for it. Big old baby photo, how about that?
Oh, cameras back there? All right. If you have a camera and want to take a photo, you can go back there and we'll take a picture of us looking this way. Hi. Ah. Oh, it's good to have you here. So, we're all going to face this way and have a camera taking it from this way. Oh, there's a photographer right there.
Put them by the speaker. Speaker of the house.
Future business leader, there you are.
Exactly. That's right.
Now, go ahead.
Thank you.
No, no. Future business leader.
Yay.
All right. We're going to go on to our next agenda item. If the moms and babies would like to exit, we'll go on to our next item. And we're hoping to get that picture up on our website at Ventura.org, so you'll get a chance to take a look at it. Our next item on our agenda then is our Item 23. And this is Presentation of a Resolution to Rodney Fernandez, the Director of Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, and Supervisor Long's going to be doing this.
Well, Rodney, I'm not sure how to follow all that. What do you think here?
I am.
Huh? No way. Well, I am very honored, frankly, to be able to invite Rodney in to give a board resolution to acknowledge his life's work as Rodney retires from this path of work and moves on to, I expect, many other paths of interest and enjoyment. And invite certainly Rodney to come up, and we'll acknowledge who's here with us. I'm going to read the highlights. Obviously, there's 37 years of experience in the community development field, and I think most of us know of Rodney and of the great work of Cabrillo. But 30 outstanding years as the founder and the executive director of Cabrillo Economic Development, which has become the largest community development corporation in Ventura County. Rodney's leadership and vision built the grassroots organization Cabrillo Improvement Association, which grew to become Cabrillo Economic Development that served our county, Santa Barbara, and adjacent areas in Los Angeles County. And under his tenure as the executive director, Rodney's developed and constructed 34 projects, totaling 1,600 affordable rental and ownership homes. Rodney oversaw the development of the CEDC's Property and Asset Management Division, which manages 714 affordable rental apartments in its portfolio, and has led efforts by the organization to funnel more than $348 million in real estate development through the organization's activities over the 30 years. The startup of Neighborhood Works Home Ownership Center at CEDC has assisted nearly 700 families into homeownership through loan packaging totaling more than $62 million, and assisted more than 8,300 families to purchase a home through education and counseling. And no better, no better thing to do than to help someone get into a home that they can both afford and manage and love and raise a family. CEDC is recognized as an exemplary member of the Neighborhood Works America Network, the country's leader in affordable housing and community development, all of this under Rodney's direction. Rodney's vision and commitment guided CEDC to use its resources to provide foreclosure, prevention, counseling to more than 2,500 families. He was instrumental in starting the first-ever Ventura County Housing Trust Fund with contributions nearing $1 million, which will make more affordable homes available for working families, seniors, and individuals with special needs. Rodney's been recognized at the local, state, and national level with numerous accolades and awards for his expertise in community development, organizational development, and executive leadership, such as the Alice McGrath Warrior for Justice Award from the Ventura County Mexican-American Borough Association, Pacific Coast Business Times Who's Who in Education and Civic Leadership, KECT Union Bank of California Hispanic Heritage Local Hero of the Year Award, and many other exemplary. But I think those things that really matter most to Rodney, knowing Rodney, are those personal thank-yous he gets from the families who move in and have a place, finally, that provides them more than just shelter, more than just safety, but a home for them and their families. I looked for some of the prior accolades and celebrations of the good work of CEDC and came across a letter from our seller, Cervantes, who lives in Paseo del Rio River Park with her husband and three daughters. "It was a special thank you to Rodney for making, for thinking of us," as she said, "and making our lives extremely happy for making the lives of our children better. We're privileged to live here. We feel very safe. Now we have access to programs on site which are very educational for our children and for ourselves. My six-year-old Amanda was struggling in school and looking at repeating the first grade, but then I sent her to the homework club every day here on, at the housing, at the home center where they live. And Maria worked with her and helped her, and she helped Amanda pass into second grade with that homework support." So, it's the programs, it's the services that are offered and connected and integrated into all of the housing development that Cabrillo does. It supports the family, and it certainly is a investment both in our current folks who need homes, but investment in generations who will know that they're supported by their community and know that they're loved and embraced by people who care about them. And Rodney, you have been that caregiver, that care supporter, that person who knows the importance of providing that kind of a home to people who are in need in our county. So, 37 years, 30 years on the home development side. I invite you up. I know that you want to share some words with us. And I know there are others here who would like to speak also, and invite them up.
Madam Chair, before Rodney says a couple of words, I just want to echo what the supervisor said. And I've had the pleasure of working with Rodney for years and years, especially when I was in the city of Ochsford. You had numerous projects like Semin Street and Mida Street. And I remember going to one of those homes, as was mentioned, that this one family was really proud of having their own home, and your staff and you provided that effort. And you're working on the Gonzales Road project now too, that I think is going to help many, many people. And the River Park, I was there for the ribbon-cutting ceremonies. And it was mentioned in the resolution that they have a little section there for the kids to do their homework and for families to gather and so forth. I want to commend you for your many, many, many years of service to the community for providing affordable housing. And I think you're going to leave a good stamp and a good legacy behind, you know. So, I want to thank you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Since we're, I'm going to say it before you get started. I've said some things to you before, and I think it's all been repeated. I just want to let you know I feel the exact same way, just tremendous respect for what you've done for 37 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
And the same also, just not only providing housing, but also providing hope. And that means a lot to people at the edge. So, thank you for your good work.
Thank you. I think hope is the good word, and I think you have a lot to be proud of. So, thank you. All right. Thank you, Supervisor. Well, I'm taking a deep breath here because I need to, and your kind remarks cause me to take a deep breath. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. It's very humbling, and it's also very appropriate that we are here together because, in fact, my ability to be of service to this community and our company's ability to be of service started with the county. I want to give you just a little bit of a history here. So, I grew up in Los Angeles and was able to go to college and went to work for the Redevelopment Agency. And I stumbled onto this wonderful place when I was in college because I used to backpack quite a bit in the local mountains, particularly Santa Paula Creek. And I fell in love with Santa Paula. And I decided when I was working in the Redevelopment Agency, because of my asthma, I'd been looking to get out of LA for some time, and I said, "Well, Santa Paula's it." And so, then the next thing is you've got to get a job, right? And so, I, you know, got turned down quite a bit. But lo and behold, Johnny Johnson, the infamous, famous Johnny Johnson, hired me in 1974 when he was the Director of the Support Services Agency to be his administrative assistant, and that started my career here in the county. The next year, the county had a budget crisis, and they moved to consolidate some commissions. And one of the commissions that was left standing was the Human Relations Commission. And they needed somebody to help that commission move forward, so I applied for the job. And lo and behold, Supervisor Maggie Erickson-Kildy was the chair of that board, who along with Gerard Kapusik, hired me to take on that post. And that was really important for me personally because when I left LA, I knew I wanted to stay in the field of community development, but I, you know, you don't know how these things evolve, right? And so, here I was able to begin working with the community again. And through that, in 1975, the Cabrillo Village Crisis erupted, and the leaders there came to the Human Relations Commission asking for help. And there I was, and there we were. The county was very, very supportive, both at the Board of Supervisory Level and at the staff level, and I think most importantly, at the spiritual level, because that was such a tremendous undertaking that they were committed to do, which was to take responsibility for their own community. But they realized they needed partners in order to do that, and so here we were. So, here's my fondest memory. It happened right here in this chamber. In the 80s, based on the experience, the success of Cabrillo Village, Rancho Sesby found itself in another crisis in 1979. And the county in 1981 asked the new CEDC startup, which the county provided startup funds, to take on this task. And it was a pretty big task. The growers had basically evicted people from the camp that looked like another Cabrillo Village. They bought off many, many families, but about 100 families remained and stuck it out. And so, we went through a lot of planning and a lot of searching for a new site and finally found one up on the current 126. And ran the project through very carefully because we knew it was going to get appealed. And lo and behold, the planning commission turned it down. And what's really ironic is that the deciding vote turned out to be one of my ex junior high school teachers from my old neighborhood. So, it shows you how influential I was. I couldn't swear. And here's another connection. Ed Jones was my junior, was at that same junior high school, was my after-sports teacher in junior high school. And so, whenever I would come up here, he would tell the whole world what a bad I was. But I showed a lot of promise. So, the planning commission turned down the project. And, you know, so we had a lot of hearings here, packed, and overflow out in the fountain area, you know, with supporters. And that's the project that Karen Flock cut her teeth on. She joined in 1981, and, you know, it was a real, it was a real challenge. So, this is 1985. And I wasn't worried about it because, you know, when you go into this business, you count votes, right? And so, I figured, you know, the Board of Supervisors was going to overturn it, and they did. But here's the key vote. Jim Dougherty, bless his heart, and may he rest in peace, the supervisor from Simi at that time, very quiet, very conservative, very noble man, was quiet throughout the whole deliberation. And this was a hearing that lasted two days. And so, when it got time for him to vote, those of you who know Jim, he goes, "I'm going to support this project because these folks work very hard, and they put food on our table, and they deserve better, and they're looking to take responsibility for their own lives, so they've got my vote." That was it. So, I want to just conclude by thanking you all. And, you know, we can't do our work without a partnership at many, many levels. And it's been heartwarming over the years to know that from a philosophical standpoint, the Board of Supervisors and their staff, your staff over the years have just been tremendous to work with. We couldn't do our work without their... It's, we couldn't do our work without their partnership in the trenches and obviously your political support at the end. So we want to acknowledge you for all that you've done over the years and your staff and the Cabrillo Board and staff. Deborah Schreiber is here representing the Cabrillo Board and there's a handful of, of prominent Cabrillo staff. And I will note that there are four people in the room, uh, that go back to the seventies with this whole effort. Jesse, Laura, and myself, and Karen. So you're looking at about a hundred and twenty years of experience at this, at this wonderful work that we do. So without the Board and the staff, I wouldn't be here in front of you. And, and it's because of them and because of their commitment to our work that CEDC's in great hands and it's continued to do, it's going to continue to do great things. You know, part of our effort over the years has been not only to serve the community, but to serve it with integrity. And I think that we've been able to do that. And because of that integrity, our ability to continue to be a, a partner with you all is, is, I feel very good, is going to continue to last. So thank you all very much and we'll see each other, I'm sure.
Okay Rodney. Thank you. I have this resolution on behalf of the Board, and I'd like to certainly have the CEDC folks come up and we'll do a group picture, but first, we have youth from CEDC Housing here to present a token of appreciation to Rodney. Anna Lopez, Bernice Reyes, Gisela Rodriguez, and Kenya Salasido. And they have a presentation.
Sure, sure, sure.
And please.
Thank you. This is great. Nice surprise.
Speak into the microphone here.
Uh, this is an appreciation gift for you Rodney Fernandez for your retirement. This is also a way of saying thank you for building homes for families in Ventura County. Via Fernandez. Via Fernandez honors the legacy of the founder of Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. With this archetype of a Cabrillo community, CEDC families would like to give back the gift of a beautiful and wholesome community to Rodney Fernandez.
This is me by the Friday Night Live Youth Club. This archetype model has a vegetable garden, a strawberry field, a soccer field, and a community room.
My name is Crisilla Sisnetos. I work in the Community Building Division and I get to work with the youth groups that we're developing. And so Brady Rourke, who's the architect for Central Station, Gilmore Central Station, was the one that provided the model. And the youth took it upon themselves to decorate it and create a beautiful community garden and then also, you know, talk about the things they like to do in the community room and things like that. So it's a lot of appreciation from the families to you Rodney.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's have, um, come on, come on up. Let's do a group shot and do, conclude our youth here.
Yeah, let's put this in the front.
Yeah.
You guys hold on to this and put it in the front.
Yeah, and if everyone can come actually also here, there's more.
Okay, come on over here. You guys go in front. Got it? Wait a minute, let me take this off open. Off open, necessary. Brady, you should get in here.
One more over here. So ready, one, two, and three? Great.
Great job.
Oh, this is wonderful.
Great job.
Very nice. Thank you.
Rodney, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Legacy and so.
Thank you Supervisor Long for bringing that forward and our best wishes to Rodney. And our, brings us to our ten-thirty time certain item on resolution. We have ratification, that one, twenty-four? Ratification of a Behavioral Health Director Contract with Telecare, and Ms. Roy is here.
Good morning Chairman Parks, members of the Board, and Mr. Powers. This is Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Item twenty-four contains actually six recommendations for your consideration. The first one is to consider the contract for fiscal year eleven-twelve for the Telecare Corporation. This contract is for the residential treatment facilities that are located out on Lewis Road in Camarillo. There are three long-term social rehab facilities and one board and care facility. The rates, there are slight increases in the rates. The rates are based on actual costs. We settle the cost at the end of the year. The second, um, item, or second, um, recommendation is for a contract again with Telecare Corporation. This is for the EDIP program. This serves twenty-five to thirty youth between the ages of eighteen to twenty-five. These are individuals who are identified as having early signs of schizophrenia, and this is a early intervention program to mitigate the effects of that illness, intervene early, and change the trajectory of that illness to hopefully, um, cause these individuals to have less symptoms, less side effects. Very important program, we're really excited about that one. Item three is our contract with Recovery Innovations. Recovery Innovations provides, um, positions for peer support specialists and recovery coaches who work side-by-side with our clinicians in our MHSA programs. That item also contains, um, a rent increase. They, they sublet space from us at the Williams Building, which allows them to co-locate with our Oxnard Adult Clinic. It's a great synergy. Clients can come in, they can get connected to RECA, participate in recovery classes, make connections, hopefully engage in their program. And there is a rent increase there because there's more rental space and also some common space that was now included in their rent agreement with the county. The fourth recommendation is a recommendation for Idea Engineering. I've spoken about that project with you before. Idea Engineering provides the universal prevention strategies for our prevention and early intervention programs. One of the things that we're really working on with them is to decrease the stigma associated with mental illness, with twenty-two million people in the United States suffering from some form of mental illness. A lot of those individuals are between the ages of eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds. It's that particular group in particular that does not seek help because of the stigma, even more so than individuals who are older. And of course, intervening early really does change the course of the disease. And so it's very important that we get the word out there and help people understand that mental illness is a chronic disease, just like diabetes, and that there should be no shame in seeking treatment. So that's primarily one of the efforts that Idea Engineering is working on with us. Recommendation five is for the Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation, who acts as a fiscal intermediary for us in our programs, for educational stipends. We have a number of programs and there's about two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars in stipends that they help us manage. Recommendation six is for the California Institute of Mental Health, and that is the entity through which we contract that provides a lot of training to our department in evidence-based practice. It's been very important for us to make sure that when people come to our department for treatment, that we are doing things for them that have data behind them and we know that the types of interventions that we're providing are successful. So California Institute of Mental Health has done a significant, significant amount of training for our clinicians and will continue to do so next year. Some of the increase in that contract is due to the fact that some of the training that we intended to do in fiscal year ten-eleven is now going to either happen in eleven-twelve or will continue into an eleven-twelve. So that's why there's an, part of the reason why there's an increase in that contract. If you have any questions, I know it's a long board letter.
Thank you. Are there questions to Mr. Powers?
Uh, just a comment, that the notion of prevention of serious mental illness, particularly those suffering from schizophrenia, is really a great sea-changing approach, and hats off to Melanie and the department for really being upfront on this issue.
Thank you.
And that EDIP program, that is not a residential program, is that correct?
It's a, it's an intensive, community-based program. It's an act-model program where individuals receive really intensive case management, wraparound-type services in the community and linkage to treatment and other supports.
Thank you. Does the Board have any other comments or questions on this? If not, can we please have a motion? Motion by Supervisor Zargosa, second by Supervisor Bennett. And with that, if we could all please vote. Thank you Ms. Roy.
Thank you very much.
And all of this is reviewed with outcomes and performance outcomes, and I think that will really help us to continue moving in the right direction. Our next item on the agenda is our ten-thirty time certain, a presentation of a resolution honoring Kim Hawking for his thirty-eight years' service in the, in the county. And I'll turn it over to Supervisor Zargosa, but I'll get a second chance to comment.
Yeah, Kim, if you'd like to come forward, I'd like to read this resolution for the Board of Supervisors. And I'd just like to share a little something that I got the, his resume, and his resume, if we were to put every single item that he's done here in his resume, I'd probably need three of his resolutions to, to share the good things that you've done for, for the community. So what I'm going to read does not really reflect all the good things that you've done, but I'm honored to read this resolution as we, as we proceed. And this is a resolution for the Board of Supervisors honoring Kim Hawking since he retires with thirty-eight years of service to the County of Ventura. Whereas in nineteen seventy, Kim began his long career with the County of Ventura Planning Division, and whereas throughout the years of nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-five, Kim served as a manager and supervisor for various comprehensive countywide planning programs and residential permits. It was around this time that Kim began running a hobby that he has followed throughout his life. Whereas in nineteen eighty-five through nineteen eighty-seven, Kim was a senior administrative budget analyst for the Chief Administrator's Office while also working as a position for LAFCO. In nineteen eighty-seven, Kim began his yet another phase of his career. He returned to the Planning Division to do great work on a variety of projects. Whereas twenty-four years later, Kim is finally retiring, and Kim has run, well, I mentioned that he was a runner, over forty thousand miles in the last thirty-two years. That's a lot of miles. And has gone through about a hundred pairs of running shoes. None with more free time, none with more free time at hand. We foresee that he's going to have many, many more miles to run and also more pairs of shoes to wear, and we commend you for that. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Kim for his many years of exemplary service to the County of Ventura and wishes him well in his retirement. This is really, does not do any justice to you, but I want to commend you for all the good work, and I want to go down and, and hand this resolution to you, and I'm sure that the other Board members have some other good things to say about you. Thank you.
I, I feel like Supervisor Zargosa stole you from my district. All of the time, in the ten years I've been here, I assumed you were a resident of the City of Ventura, so I, I, somehow it just doesn't feel right that I have somebody else doing this resolution. But I've really enjoyed working with you. You've been a consummate professional, and I think that that's the best compliment you can get as you go out, and, and that is that I really feel like you genuinely tried not to respond to political pressure, but just call it like you saw it in terms of what was the right decision for a staff person to be making. So thank you very much.
And Supervisor Long?
Yes, also thank you, true public servant. You're appreciated in both your dedication, your due diligence in every piece of work you've done with us for the county, and, and you've helped to grow some new county employee here, and not newly longer, matured well on the job. But, you know, you've been very, very conscientious, Kim, in your years of work with us and with the public, very responsive, and, and just know, know your subjects well and have always served the public well. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor Sefoy?
I would just say also, enjoy your retirement and thanks for giving your biggest part of your life to this county and doing such a great job for the county and making this a better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Powers, do you want to comment?
Just a quick, yes. Kim, worked with you many years ago and always kind and gracious throughout, and I just appreciate all, all that you've done here. Thank you.
And I, I too, just appreciate your professionalism, your intelligence. I think of you as the curator of our county's history. And then also just the fact that, the respect that you have gained from the community. And I know some people that are, you know, strong, you know, fighters for, you know, what they want to see, the, the land use in the county, but they always have tremendous respect for you, and I think that says a lot, that your professionalism emanates throughout. So thank you for your many years with the county, your good work, and, and really being a role model for others. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chair, some words?
Oh, well, thank you. I wasn't planning on doing this, but I want to thank the Board, of course, for those very, very kind words. You know what to say, I, I was happy to follow CEDC's and Rodney's presentation because it reminded me, I was very lucky to be the Residential Land Use Section Supervisor when Rancho Sespy came through the mill, and we recommended approval of it. So I'm very happy, happy to say that we did that. But there's been so many projects I've worked on over the years that are just fascinating, and always the highlight was to come down to the Board and have the Board consider them as well as the public to consider the issues. And I want to thank the Board for all their support. I've worked with many Boards over the years, like, I don't know how many, maybe nine different Boards perhaps in that timeframe, so, I mean, thank you very much.
Do you have any family members here?
I have my daughter Laura here.
The Board should write and find one from down and, and take a photo with it.
Oh, thank you too, Karen.
And this, let's get all the Board members here.
Oh, great.
Thirty-eight years is a long time.
And you've been earned that long.
I understand you also worked for the city of Oaxaca.
I did, yes. Same thing you did.
Yeah, I was there. And, well, this way, this, this way, over here.
Yeah, I got a couple, so let's do one more, okay? On the count of three. One, two, three. Great, thank you very much.
Our next ten-thirty item is item twenty-six, and this is a recommendation of Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Yes, it is, and I'll pass it on over to you.
Oh, thank you Supervisor. And I, I would like to certainly invite up Dr. Bob Gonzalez and Paul Lorenz to the podium as I introduce this item. It is my pleasure, as we've just honored someone who's dedicated- But the board letter certainly calls out who Harriet H. Samuelson is and was in this county, and her, again, her love for children, her love for this county, and the foundation's ongoing gifts to the county in many ways, but today particularly for, to enhance our goal to have the best PICU in this county. I'll turn this over now, please, to Dr. Bob.
Thank you, Board members, and Mike. The Pediatric Intensive Care Unit, of course, is an extraordinarily important service for the children and families of Ventura County. And we've had multiple occasions in which critically ill children have had to be transported out by helicopter to a hospital 60 miles away, 70 miles away. And that is dramatic in itself, but the impact it has when a child's in an ICU for days and weeks on end, and that family having to live their life, moving back and forth between the hospital and their home, trying to care for their other children, is, is really an incredible impactor on, on their family life and something that stays with them. So we're really proud to be able to bring forth the Pediatric Intensive Care Unit. I want to thank Mike for his role in starting this project and providing leadership, and I'm, I'm truly proud of this as our, the entire staff at VCMC. We really do want to thank the Samuelson Foundation for this support and also our Medical Resource Foundation. I'm going to turn this over to Paul, who's going to say a few words.
So it is truly a pleasure to be here and to be a part of this, this day. One of the things that we as a system pride ourselves on is the ability to fill gaps and needs in the community, and this is once again a testimony to that effort. This is something that's critical to pediatric care in this county, and, and we have a lot of wonderful support in the community, which is critical. So as we all know, the reason we're able to bring this forward is because you have a financially stable system, a system that takes the financial integrity and the cost-effectiveness of healthcare delivery very seriously. The other reason is because we believe in quality. We have quality staff and physicians that are committed and that are passionate about healthcare delivery. And the third most important component, and I think all of you would agree, and it's a philosophy that Mike Powers has ingrained in us, in the agency, and Dr. Gonzalez has, of course, followed through, and that is, that is our engagement with the community, our commitment to work with the community and have the opportunity to foster relationships where we can share in the benefit of, of serving the community, is serving those that really need our services and depend on our public healthcare system. So today, you know, of course, today we have here the Medical Resource Foundation, and we have a number of members here present, and they have taken the time to spend with us because they believe in our system, and they want to be here to support the Samuelson Foundation and their wonderful contribution to the, to the agency. So I'd just like to mention who's here. Of course, you have Dicky Chandler, who is our President of our Medical Resource Foundation. You have Bob Bame, who's the Chairman of the Board, of our Board, and he's a retired attorney with the City of Ventura. We have Roy Schneider, I think he might have made it, if not. We have Roger Case with Roger Case Realty. He's our Secretary of the Board. Christine Parish, who is our Vice President, who is the Vice President of US Bank and the Treasurer of our Board. Kevin Samida, CPA, and the Coacher of Budget Finance Committee. And of course, you have Dr. Gonzalez and myself, who proudly serve on the Medical Resource Foundation Board.
Mr. Chiveroli.
Oh, Mr. Rick Chiveroli with Chiveroli and Associates. You never know when he's going to show up.
He's always there.
So it's important that I mention these names and where they come from, because that really is testimony to how we engage the community and the support that we garner from individuals that really educate others in the community about who we are and what we do. And that's really about what we're here today. So the Samuelson Foundation, through the work of the Medical Resource Foundation, has now really engaged the healthcare agency in our effort, in our mission, our passion for children. And, you know, this is, I have to tell you, it's, it's not a precedent in terms of dollar amount. This is really a precedent about the agency engaging individuals in the community to share in that effort. We more than likely will have other people that will be interested in contributing, and we will take those on a case-by-case basis, because we have a lot to offer the community and a lot to share. So one of the things that's really important is to give your Board a status on the PICU in terms of, of its development. Doctor, before I introduce and have Mr. Compton and Mrs. Yaboot come up from, who are trustees of the foundation, I really want Dr. Markham to give your Board and both foundations a status on where we stand with the PICU.
Good, great.
While Dr. Markham is coming up, you know that it's a team effort, and one of the leaders in our system is Cindy Cole, who has championed us and worked closely with Dr. Markham and our physician medical staff. Cindy Cole is here.
Jenny.
And Jenny Barstet, who is going to be the manager, nurse manager of our Pediatric Intensive Care Unit. So, Dr. Markham.
Members of the Board, Mr. Powers, as Mike was saying, our development of the pediatric ICU is really a team effort. And the first thing I'd like to do before I give you an update is to thank all the members of the Board and Mr. Powers for your support in helping us build this PICU at Ventura County Medical Center. The second people I'd like to thank is the community. Without the community, specifically the trustees of the Harriet Samuelson Foundation, our PICU would not be able to be in the place that, development that it is today. So I thank the community and the overwhelming amount of support we've received from the community. And then lastly, I'd like to thank the wonderful people that work at Ventura County Medical Center that help us build the pediatric ICU. Exactly where we're at is we are aiming for a date of October 2011 to open our pediatric ICU. We are currently renovating the space, which has been a big project. Once we are complete with renovation, we will have OSHPOD come by and give us their stamp of approval, and then from that point, we will have the state come by and give us license for the six beds. We've been working internally in training our staff members at Ventura County Medical Center to learn how to take care of critically ill patients, critically ill children, and we've also been working externally. And I'd like to really thank the support that we've had externally, specifically from our neighboring hospitals. The attitude has been, what can we do to help you, and how can we help you in this, in this venture? And so I'd also like to thank the neighboring hospitals in helping us build our PICU. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks, Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Markham. And so if I could ask Mr. Compton and Mrs. Yaboot, join us, our guests of honors, if you will.
You're welcome, and thank you.
My name is Robert Compton, and I am a co-trustee of the foundation. I'd just like to affirm that we would, we feel that the Pediatric Intensive Care Unit is going to be a valuable asset in the county and a positive contribution to the children's health, which, as you know, is one of the main causes that Harriet Samuelson was committed We hope you'll confirm the agreement, and you'd like to move forward with it.
And I know that Harriet would be very proud if this ever happened.
No, thank you. Thank you so very much.
If you don't mind, if your Board would allow us to take a picture with some of the members of the Board.
I would, I would like that we would all do that. This is quite a gift, as I said, a gift that is just going to just benefit us for decades, the children in this county. And, but why don't we first, if we might, Madam Chair, take a vote?
I think that's important.
And I put the motion forward to approve all three recommended actions.
All right, this is a motion and a one very happily taken. Thank you very much for your generosity.
And let's have the Medical Resource Foundation Board members join us, and Cindy, and everybody who's a part of this, come down and take a picture. Mike, all of us.
Okay, everybody squeeze in nicely tight. You need to, yeah, and, yeah, a couple people could take those little stats back there. Okay. So if you'll look at the camera, and if you can't see the lens, we need to move this. Okay, can everybody see the lens? Good. All right. One more. Okay, just for safety here, everybody close your eyes, and when I count to three, open them. One, two, three. Great.
Thank you so much. Thank you. God, thank you so much. Thank you. That's exciting. I look forward to cutting ribbons.
And it, and I think it is encouraging that we can do these kinds of things and maybe reach, continue an outreach campaign to see, there might be other facilities that also could be named after generous benefactors, and maybe looking at Board policies for that and suggestions on how we might do that, because in this economic times, we need all the public-private partnerships that we can get. So I know our, our CEO's office will be looking at other opportunities and how we can proceed. The next item on the agenda, I believe, is one that's been brought forward by Supervisors Bennett and Long, and this is our 11:00 AM time-certain, and it is item 27, and I do have a few cards on it. So whoever would be taking on that Board item?
Okay. Thank you. Madam Chair, I'll be very brief in my comments and very brief in my PowerPoint. So I just have three quick slides, so if we could just pop, pop the first one up. Just for the benefit of the public, there, I think, is a particular need for us to try to get as much local employment out of the spending of our construction dollars on the hospital as possible. The Ventura County, overall, the Ventura County unemployment rate is 10.3%. Next slide. But construction employment is down more than 50%, and, and there are so many construction workers here in Ventura walking around that have, have real need for an employment, and as much as we can try to get those people employed, it'd certainly be helpful for the Ventura County economy. Next slide. Project has $100 million payroll, hundreds of construction jobs, and if you take that and multiply it through, it's not just those construction jobs, but then those people will spend more dollars here in the economy, and it, economists will tell you that the multiplier effect of a dollar spent is it's spent about five times over the course of the year, and we could certainly use that. So I'm certainly here to speak in favor of our recommendation, which is to ask the CEO and County Council to examine and come back to us after the August break with recommendations in terms of options for how we can increase as much as possible local construction, I mean, local employment in the hiring. Supervisor Long?
Yeah, just, uh, thank you. Certainly to join in on this, to, this is going to be the biggest public project that's done in this county, probably for at least a decade. I don't know of another one we have on the books. I certainly know that this is one that has been guided well by both the Board and, and the hospital leadership for both the necessity of doing this project, the, the opportunity to put the creative funding together to do it. As, as is said in the board letter, the multiplier effect of, of having local hire is many times over. The value of really reaching out to people who have been unemployed, are unemployed, the impacts we've seen ripple through our, even, our economy as a result of people who lost their jobs or haven't been able to do the work that they're trained to do. We see that in our caseloads at our hospital, in our caseloads in our social service programs, and these are, these are people who are our neighbors and our, our friends and people we should be really looking to see how we can assist them in, as well as assisting a very good project, and making sure that there's benefits all the way around from doing this. So to take a look at this, I think, is a, is a valid request and, and something we should all have interest in doing for the greater benefit of the community.
Madam Chair, I know we have some speakers, but I, I want to thank Supervisors Bennett and Long for bringing this before the full Board. I'm very supportive of, of creating more jobs here in Ventura County, and especially when we see the 50% unemployment, you know, in our construction jobs, and, you know, that's very critical. I'm very supportive also because I believe that we have a lot of skilled, good-paying, that this will create skilled jobs, you know, for the community, the type that I think that we need during the construction of this hospital. And as was mentioned in the, in the report, it's a multiplier, a two-point-plus-percent multiplier that's going to help the community by creating one job, it'll create two and a half other jobs, and, and I think that, that one 170-some-million-dollar project is a, is a project that'll help the, the economy. So I'm very supportive of the, of this proposal, and, and I think it's going to be very positive for the community, and, and also I believe they have, we have a lot of skilled workers here that can benefit from that, too. So I'm very supportive of the, of this request.
All right, so we go ahead and call the cards then? I have three, I guess, six, six speakers. First one's Anna Vaillée, followed by Marcella Morales.
Good morning. We having a good time? Good morning, Chair Person Parks and members of the Board. My name is Anna Maria Vaillée, and I am here today representing our LULAC chapters and members throughout Ventura County as a member of our Board of Directors. LULAC strongly supports the hiring of local workers for publicly funded construction projects. There is an undeniable benefit to hiring locally.
The value of really reaching out to people who have been unemployed, are unemployed, the impacts we've seen ripple through our even, our economy as a result of people who lost their jobs or haven't been able to do the work that they're trained to do. We see that in our caseloads at our hospital and our caseloads in our social service programs, and these are people who are our neighbors and our friends and people we should be really looking to see how we can assist them in, as well as assisting a very good project and making sure that there's benefits all the way around from doing this. So to take a look at this, I think, is a valid request and something we should all have interest in doing for the greater benefit of the community.
Madam Chair, I know we have some speakers, but I want to thank Supervisors Bennett and Long for bringing this before the full board. I'm very supportive of creating more jobs here in Ventura County, and especially when we see the 50% unemployment, you know, in our construction jobs, you know, that's very critical. I'm very supportive also because I believe that we have a lot of skilled, good-paying, this will create skilled jobs, you know, for the community, the type that I think that we need during the construction of this hospital. And as was mentioned in the, in the report, it's a multiplier, a two-point-plus-percent multiplier that's going to help the community by creating one job, it'll create two and a half other jobs, and I think that, that one 170-some-million-dollar project is a project that'll help the economy. So I'm very supportive of the, of this proposal, and I think it's going to be very positive for the community, and also I believe they have, we have a lot of skilled workers here that can benefit from that too. So I'm very supportive of the, of this request.
All right. Should we go ahead and call the cards then? I have three, I guess, six, six speakers. First one's Anna Maria, followed by Maricela Morales.
Good morning. We having a good time? Good morning, Chair Person Parks and members of the board. My name is Anna Maria Valle, and I am here today representing our LULAC chapters and members throughout Ventura County as a member of our Board of Directors. LULAC strongly supports the hiring of local workers for publicly funded construction projects. There is an undeniable benefit to hiring locally by ensuring that those dollars are spent in our county, helping our local economy, and benefiting those in need of jobs. As you know, our county unemployment rate is over 10%, and many families are struggling in these challenging economic times. In particular, Latinos and Latinas are disproportionately impacted by unemployment. We believe that Ventura County residents fully support utilizing local workers and would rather hire locally for projects funded by their tax dollars. This project provides an opportune moment to create local jobs and thus reduce unemployment. While we may not solve the serious unemployment rate, the Ventura County Medical Center Hospital Replacement Project can have a sustained impact for the years it will take to complete this project, as you well noted. As our elected representatives, you have a great opportunity to maximize the benefit to our local economy, and we encourage that you do everything possible to enact a local hiring component for the Ventura County Medical Center Replacement Hospital Project. This will significantly impact and benefit our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Valle. Our next speaker, Maricela Morales, followed by Rodney Cobos.
This is Team Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Maricela Morales, and I'm with Central Coast Alliance United for a Sustainable Economy, CAUZ. This is very exciting, and from our perspective, doesn't come, you know, soon enough, but we're very glad that it's here. At your Board of Supervisors meeting of two years ago, on August 11th, 2009, CAUZ presented public comment regarding the board's opportunity at that time to incorporate local hire components on projects made possible through the federal stimulus funding or ARA funding. At that point, the County of Ventura had been allocated $136 million over a number of projects. So as was pointed out by Member Long, this one project is much larger than those several projects. To date, local hire components have not been incorporated into local building and construction projects, and as a result, Ventura County residents have lost opportunities for local employment. In fact, and unfortunately, the Ventura County unemployment rates of today have not changed as compared to two years ago. And so in the handout, we have the comparable rates. And so in July of 2009, the county unemployment was 10.2, so just a .1% lower than today. And there are certain communities in our area that throughout this entire time have had high, above-average rates, county rates, and those cities that have consistently been disproportionately impacted are the cities of Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Oxnard. But other cities that have had above-average county unemployment rates consistently are the cities of Ojai and Port Oinimi. That's in terms of concentration, but if we look at numbers, the cities include Oxnard, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks, which right now is tied with Ventura. So whether we look at it in terms of concentration or we look at it in terms of numbers of people that are unemployed, all cities in this county are impacted, and so this local hire component and provision is one that benefits all districts of this county. I'd like to point out that it's important to align the local hire components to the disproportionate impact in different communities, and that also, successful local hiring components can include apprenticeship provisions, and this is a great opportunity to expand job opportunities, particularly to women and people of color that are underrepresented in the building and construction trades. So we encourage you to include that aspect of the local hire components. In closing, it's been at least two years since the people of Ventura County in record numbers have sought work and not found it. Today, the County Board of Supervisors can take action to reduce local unemployment by incorporating this local hire in the construction of the replacement hospital project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Rodney Cobos, followed by Maricela Crusay.
Good morning, Madam Chair Parks.
Press.
Board of Supervisors. Mr. Powers and County Staff. My name is Rodney Cobos. I'm a 42-year Ventura County resident. I want to start off this morning with a little quote. "There is no social program in this country that is as important as a good job that pays well, that gives someone an opportunity to go to work, have some security, have benefits, and take care of their family, and have a good life." And that was a former, former U.S. Senator from South Dakota, Byron Dorgan. I'm a plumber by trade, and some 17 years ago, I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to be part of a local plumbing apprenticeship program while receiving the GI Bill, and worked as a journeyman plumber throughout the county on numerous projects. The past few years, I've seen a change in the local economy's workforce, and I have some concerns with contractors, employers, not living up to their responsibility in the terms lowest responsible bidder. It is my opinion that their responsibility should be to the county residents to where this work is being performed. I have seen in many cases where out-of-county and in some cases out-of-state contractors who have performed work in this county have employed zero county residents. These unscrupulous employers bring their workforce with them, oftentimes underbidding our local contractors, and take our tax dollars elsewhere. I just want to reiterate what Supervisor Long and Supervisor Bennett presented to the board. There are three negative impacts to contractors utilizing a non-local workforce. The first one, it denies jobs to local construction workers who are permanent county residents. Two, because of the differences in the amount of spending between a local and a non-local workforce, there's less money circulating within the local economy, and as a result, does not create those secondary jobs. And lastly, because of spending locally, a smaller amount of local sales tax revenue is generated. Unfortunately, the past few years have been more challenging than others in finding construction work, employment. As you are well aware, we will have and we will continue to experience high rates of unemployment in this county unless we, as a county, take action. We all agree that, for the most part, government does not create jobs. The economy creates jobs. Employers create jobs. But what local, local government can do is cultivate and facilitate an environment that supports family sustaining wages and local jobs so that we, as taxpayers, don't have to, or we won't be subjected to higher taxes and decreased public services. In conclusion, Madam Chair, I thank you for allowing me to address the board. I commend the Board of Supervisors for bringing this local hiring issue up for discussion and giving serious consideration to implementing a local hiring provision on the Ventura County Medical Center Replacement Clinic. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Cruspy, is it Marcelo?
Yeah.
Marcelo Cruspy with the Bricklayers Local Four.
Good morning, Mr. Powers and Board members. I have been a resident of Ventura County for the last 24 years. I work here. I raised my family here. My youngest son was born at Community Memorial Hospital. I'm in favor of this project going forward, and I also would like to imply that I would like to see local hire, local help to generate more jobs. I have about 130 brothers that work in the trade like I do. We watch projects come in and out of the area done by out-of-the-area contractors, one being, first I'll start with a wave, which is the masonry contractor, went bankrupt on that particular project. The other one, Soho Apartment Complex on Ventura Avenue, and right now, this Del Encanto, Encanto, Paseo Del Encanto, right here on Thompson and Oak, that's being built, all the masonry is being done by an Orange County out-of-the-area contractor. This does not generate any workforce, does not stimulate our economy. I'm pro of local hire, local help, and this would be a good chance for you all to help generate some jobs to stimulate our local economy, which we all know is struggling. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Steve Sweeting, followed by our last speaker, Jim Gilman.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Steve Sweeting. I reside in East Ventura and have lived in the county all my life. I've been a sheet metal worker for the past 35 years and have served my apprenticeship at Ventura College in the late '70s. I'm here today on behalf of many of my friends and family, not only for sheet metal workers, but for all construction trades, to endorse a local hire agreement between the County of Ventura and the general contractors, and most important, their subcontractors, for work to be formed, be performed at the new wing. I have seen many county projects over the years, and it's common for these projects to be awarded to contractors outside the county. When this happens, they typically bring in their own workforce outside of Ventura County. It only makes sense to me that our county residents, who are the ones using the facilities and whose tax dollars help fund the facilities, to be the ones to build the facilities. Again, I am here today to endorse local hire agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker, Jim Gilmer, Gilman with BBA, BA PAC.
Good job.
Thank you. Try.
Good morning, Chair Person Parks, members of the board. My name is David Jim Gilmer. I'm with the newly formed Black and Brown Alliance of Greater Oxnard and Bay PAC, which stands for the Black American Political Action Coalition of Ventura County. First of all, I'm honored to be part of this wonderful opportunity to have a local hire initiative, and I've heard and read the great presentation relative to the number of jobs that it will create, and I'm very excited about that. For the past year, I've been involved in a lot of voter outreach for disengaged voters under 35. We did an event after our Juneteenth celebration in downtown Oxnard, and we had about 300 people in attendance, and a lot of young men of color, African-American, Latino, some former construction workers, but a lot of unemployed young men. And just to put a real face on this, I know we're talking about economics and jobs, but people are depressed and stressed out because of the economy, and the spirits are very low. They think the system is broken. We did a random sort of survey of the audience and asked, "How many of you out there need a job?" And it was pretty sad to see, but very close to your statistics, about 50% of the people in there, many males of color, raised their hands. So I can tell you that the social equity enhancements that this will create over the long haul is more than just jobs. I'm here to ask you to support this wholeheartedly, and I'm in partnership with you, with many of my community representatives, that we will do all we can because this is real, it's timely, it's an idea whose time has come, it will lift the spirits of our community, and we want to partner with you in this successful endeavor. Thank you so much. And thanks to Supervisors for taking the lead on this. God bless.
Thank you for your comments. At this time then, we'll go back to the Supervisors.
Well, just to say thank you all for being here to speak to this. Certainly, each one of you talked about those who are unemployed in our community, those who are trades and professionals and workers who have lived for probably decades here in our community. I think the importance of moving this for some analysis of the CEO and County Council is to keep in mind, again, the multiplier of local hire, the benefits that, of those taxpayer dollars that are being used to build this project, that, that come full circle. So my, my, my interest in this is, we know that, and I already said this, we know that we have people, that you've spoke of this morning, who are already using our other services because they've been unemployed for months, in cases, a couple of years, and that this project is at least a four-year project. So I strongly support, we at least take a very strong look at this opportunity for local hire.
Supervisors, are we going to say, you want?
Yeah, again, I want to share and I want to thank the speakers, and like I said, I do, I'm very supportive of creating jobs here for our skilled workers, and as was shared, you know, the multiplying effect that it's going to have for the community is going to assist us, and I know that all the speakers that spoke are, I know them, I've worked with, with quite a few, all of you for that matter, and Gilmore was over at the Juneteenth, you know, over at Plaza Park, and talking to the individuals there, and talking to Tony and talking to Maricela and those folks. We need those jobs, and I think it's important, I think it's going to be a positive effect to all of us if this, if this happens to hire the local workers. And I want to thank you for being here today, and I'm very supportive of that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I appreciate the comments that we heard here today. This is a complicated issue, this issue of local hire, and so I just want to be clear that what we're asking for is a report back on the options that are out there, what we can do, what we can't do, what are solutions to some of the hurdles that maybe are out there? Are there creative things that staff can come up with? We've got a nice break here while we're gone, and staff have recommendations after they, after they did the research of this, so to get at this. And the other thing I just pointed out, I just want to remind everybody, this is a remarkable project that we have going forward here at the hospital. You know, the hospital's coming forward, and because of very good management and the way some of the funding has been set up, we're attempting to finance this from hospital revenues, and that's, it does not happen very many places in this country right now. And that it's also, this is a project that's serving the underserved population in Ventura County. Regardless of what we do here, just every time we talk about this hospital project, I think we need to remind everybody that we're out there building something for the underserved population that's going to last many, many generations, and that's a tremendous legacy and a tremendous important thing for our, for our Ventura County.
Let me just, one more thing that was said too by the speakers, you know, I know that the Building Trace has an excellent apprenticeship program, and I believe those young individuals can really use that job training, also an early apprenticeship program that they have. So I just wanted to echo that again.
And I've been a, you know, a strong proponent of, you know, buy-local campaigns. I would be in support of this if it can be done in terms of being able to use local labor. I wonder, one of the lines in the report talks about the fact that we have pre-qualified bids from three out-of-county firms, so I think that will be something that will have to be reviewed also, you know, if we can require them to utilize labor that's within our county, and, you know, certainly would be good for the economy if we can do it, and what the cost of that would be. Supervisor Ford?
I mean, to say, I know that, I just think Supervisor Bennett was pretty clear, there's a lot of state hurdles and all the issues you have to deal with with law and there, but there's no question if the opportunity with some of these employers, there are these contractors, I mean, it sure seems like it's a lot cheaper to have somebody local be doing it than shipping people from Orange County, San Francisco, especially on a long-term project. So hopefully, however we work something out, that is going to work out in the long term, because a short-term project, I can bring some of my own workers up, I guess, for a month or so. It's easy, put them in a hotel, but hopefully on a long-term basis, got to try to figure out and try to balance that, you know, that really stimulates what we're doing here. I mean, we got this, CMH is doing a project, I mean, this is really going to be good for our whole, our whole community. At the same time, trying to protect taxpayers, because you get the other issue of, you know, you don't want it to get too expensive to do it, but I don't think we can do it, because I think we got quality people here and quality contractors and people that can do it at the same price or hopefully even less because they live here. So trying to figure out how to balance all that, I know that you're giving County Council a tall issue to try to deal with, but I agree with what Supervisor Bennett said, try to be creative, try to find different ways to make it all come together so the people of this county can enjoy the benefits of the project that's going on. So I'm looking forward to see what they come back with, so.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, just to...
Yeah, just to really understand the mandate and the importance of it, these projects don't come along very often. And this is a big project. It's going to be a huge economic driver potentially for us locally and we need to seize every opportunity we can to incorporate our local, excellent local contractors here as part of this because it'll be a source of pride. This is going to be a really high-quality project as well. It's something that the community can really rally around and come together on. So there are some hurdles to doing it, but we've got to look at how we can support if we can or preventing hurdles if they're there to local contractors being part of this project. And training Supervisor Eric Goza, you mentioned that, I think there's going to be a good portion of apprenticeships as part of this project, which is, because it's so rare, it's a unique opportunity for local folks and families as well. So we'll get into it and, and report back to you.
Where are we in the process of going out to bid?
Well, the bidding process is underway right now. And so we do have, right now, three qualified bidders who have bid on the project and so, you know, that's where we are.
So if we wanted to, for example, incentivize the use of in-county labor, would that be something that then may need to go re-out to, you know, go out to bid again on once we've already gone to bid? We've put the documents together and the requirements that have to be met?
My, my understanding is that we haven't done the request for proposal for the specific hospital yet because we're still, we still, we just, we pre-qualified these contractors, but we have not gone out with an actual, okay, this is what we want because we haven't done that, we haven't completed the footprint yet for the hospital. Once we have the footprint completed, then we say, okay, to our pre-qualified bidders, this is what we want. And that's why this is so timely, because when we go out there and say, this is what we want, we're adding another component. This is what we want in this design-build process and this is what we want in terms of the process with regards to whatever components of local hire.
Yeah, just to be clear, that's exactly right, that, you know, we are still in the process of developing the design standards to give to the qualified bidders. What we've done is identify the qualified bidders because these are big projects and there's not many construction companies that can do them. So we have three, but yes, we haven't even given them the design yet.
So this is, this is still appropriate in terms of timing.
Very good timing, my comments.
And then, you know, if it's successful here, we could do it elsewhere too. I know we're, you know, building a, you know, rehabbing a whole building in Thousand Oaks where we had our open borders there and that, that's going to become a county health clinic too. So the idea that we could do this here, we may be able to do it in other places too. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the results are. Supervisor Eric Goza?
So we're in the RFQ process, is that what it is, Michael? And then, then we go into the, for the RFQ? Okay.
Okay, just want to make sure that we're not, our timing is good on this. Okay, so we have a motion on the table?
Yeah, I guess I, I just, we have, we have the motion that's, that's in our recommendation. I just want to add to it because I think there's broad consensus here on the board to incorporate the comments that we made here with regards to the specific thing that I said, that, you know, we, we want the report on all the options, recommendations, what can we do, what can't we do, so that we have a full understanding of this and then, you know, what are solutions, creative ideas, and what are recommendations of staff as they come back, so.
And I would also look at costs also. But we'll have that anyway.
Well, yeah, there's, we must look at that, but there's also, I'd ask for some analysis of cost-benefit of local hire too.
Exactly.
And the multiplying effect and the [inaudible].
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Long, a second, from Supervisor Bennett. Will you please vote? Thank you. And that passes unanimously, so we look forward to getting that report after our break. And I do believe that completes our entire agenda and we'll stand adjourned.